Um. And we will start, um. It is, well, it's. Almost six o'clock. Unless your clock is is different.
Yeah, I still five, I still have five.
At fifty-nine, yeah.
Okay, it just turned six.
Okay, so we will, um, I'd like to call the village board meeting of Tuesday, January third, two thousand and twenty-three to order. It is six P M. And uh, this is a virtual meeting. And we will start with roll call. And I'll just go across my screen. Trustee, um, Woods.
Here.
Trustee Johnson. Your mic isn't on, or you need to turn it up. Trustee Booker.
Here.
Trustee Thompson.
Here.
Trustee Orns.
Yeah.
Trustee Quirk.
Here.
And President Montgomery. Uh, here, thank you, um, as I indicated earlier, because we are on a um, virtual um, platform, we will not be doing the pledge of allegiance. But we will go to, are there any persons desiring to be heard?
That we're not president.
Okay, thank you. Uh, the next item on our agenda is elected officials and staff reports. Those were in our packets. Um, are there any questions? Or comments about those uh, reports? Oh, um, Tyler.
Yeah, I just want to announce, so it's on all the village boards radar that next Thursday, January twelfth, will be um, when we start the quarterly town halls. Um, we are branding it, labeling it as get to know Brown Deer. And each quarter, we'll be doing a session that will be both virtually and uh, in, oh, you can attend to either virtually or in person. This will be all based on community and economic development. So this will be something that we've already been pushing through some of our communications. And you're going to see a lot this week uh, through all of our communications. Um, I I asked Karen to post a potential quorum notice just because I felt like this would be a a topic that several board members would be interested in attending. So I just wanted to put that on your radar. It's at six o'clock, Thursday, January twelfth.
Okay, thank you. Um, want to remind people, if you can put your phone or your uh, mic on mute. So we don't have any background noise until um, you are speaking. Um, so that can eliminate some of the, the um, any background noises. Any other questions around the um, staff reports or um, uh, my report that's in the packet? If not, we will move forward to um, the consent agenda. And the consent agenda tonight has um, consideration of the minutes from December nineteenth, twenty twenty-two. Except the November vouchers of twenty twenty-two. Consider approval of the recognition policy, which is in our packet. I want to thank Tyler for putting that together. It it provides um, some framework and um, ideals around how to walk our recognized staff, board members and um, commi- uh, committee members. Uh, consider approval of the North Shore Municipal Court Agreement. Um, consider approval of the Shared Prosecution Services Agreement. And consider appointment of Deborah Woods to the Farmers Market Committee. Um, as I indicated, each one of those uh, policies and agreements are in your packets. Are there any questions? And and just so that the board knows, I'm not sure that you may be aware of this, we did have a um, Farmers Market member who was a vendor. She represented the vendor slot. She passed away. Um, I'm not sure if it was in November or December, Karen, would you know?
I believe it was late December.
Okay, and so we did send a card to her family. Um, but we had also had another vacancy that was on the um, the Farmers Market. Uh, so we now we do have another vacancy for a vendor. Um, that will be there and we'll be looking to fill that that position. Um, if there are no questions around the consent agenda, can we entertain a motion to approve?
This is trustee Thompson. I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by trustee Thompson and second by trustee Woods to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, I believe I got any opposed. If not, the consent agenda is approved unanimously. Uh, next, under our new business, item number A, we have um, consider Fourth of July celebration date. Um, I see Danny is on um, the line, and I don't know if Danny wants to speak to that. This is coming as a recommendation from the Special Events Committee. Um, either Danny or Tyler, and that is also in our packet.
Yes, that is correct. It is coming as a recommendation from the committee. Um, and the reasons are listed in the request for consideration, but to summarize, um, we just feel like moving forward, it uh, opens the committee up to new food vendors and uh, more flexibility with those vendors coming in. More opportunities for different entertainment. And also, the hope is to increase, um, you know, village um, involvement, because there's a lot. Uh, a lot of the feedback that we receive from, you know, people is that they've already have their barbecues and their own family things that they're attending, um, and so they're not coming into the park. So our hope is to, if we change the date, um, we see more community involvement, um, some more volunteers on the day of and things like that.
Any comments as relates to this recommendation from the committee? Uh, trustee Booker?
So how does this affect um, the parade? Is the parade coming back? Would that still be on the fourth, or how's that gonna work?
So this year, the committee has voted not to do the parade again. The budget just doesn't allow us that flexibility for us to continue having a parade at this time. Um, but as we work towards finding different funding opportunities for the Fourth of July and some of the other special events, we hope to bring that parade back. And whenever day we hold that event on, then we have the parade as well. Um, the only other thing with that too is that also increases our availability of parade units coming to um, Brown Deer. Right now, the way that the Fourth is structured, there's lots of other parades happening and it, the timing, um, a lot of vendors or like units do back to back. Uh, so and sometimes they have to choose, like most of the bigger units um, are usually in the Wamatoza Parade or sometimes they're in, you know, the different parades, the bigger ones like Cedarburg and things like that. So if we wanted to, we could have the opportunity of bringing some of those bigger units to Brown Deer if we move off of the Fourth of July.
I think the challenge, um, uh, trustee Booker.
Yeah, so how big does the budget need to be in order for you to hold this parade?
So in the past, it's been five thousand dollars. Um, but if we wanted to have like some of those bigger units, we'd probably have to increase it by another five thousand if we want some of those bigger ticket units.
Does that include uh, the band? Cost for the band, is that, would that still go on or would that not happen?
Uh, the band in the parade or like the?
The entertainment, uh, you know?
Oh, correct. We've already budgeted for the entertainment, so that would not be affected. We would still have music in the park.
Trustee Thompson, I see you have your hand up.
Yeah, okay. Uh, Danny, can you speak to the um, the time, the recommended time so that there's a little bit of discussion about changing the time of the Fourth of July celebration?
Sure. So uh, part of the other part of the Fourth of July is that we've noticed that there isn't a lot of park involvement earlier in, you know, that early afternoon. So the committee is proposing or like knocking around the idea of starting the activities in the park a little bit later, more of like a two or three o'clock as opposed to noon. So then we would probably either keep the parade time a little bit earlier but or like at that one o'clock time and like lead people to the park. Um, when we bring the parade back, uh, and then start events around that two o'clock through, two thirty timeframe. Um, if we don't have the parade, I think the goal would still be to start it a little bit later around that two, three o'clock timeframe. Um, this would allow us to space out the bands a little bit more and better. Um, and maybe spend more money on one or two bands as opposed to trying to stretch out, um, you know, our funding across multiple bands, just to fill that space.
Um, some, uh, trustee Orns. Mike?
In regards to the costs um, for the parade, wh- what do you actually have to pay for in the parades? That would, you know, I mean, you said you need ten thousand dollars.
We pay for all of the units pretty much, except for um, you know, political uh, personnel in, that are, you know, part of the state. Um, our police personnel, like, we don't pay for that, but a lot of like the bands and the, you know, different um, like the stilt walkers, any clowns, we would get anything like that, all costs. Um, the Brown Deer Band, we give money to them. Uh, so everything except for community involvement. And as you saw over the course of the last few years, there's not many organizations that participate in our parade. So most of the organizations that you've seen within the last, like, you know, before the pandemic, um, you know, three to five years, those have all been pretty much paid units. And that was even smaller in size. Our parade, I think, used to be around fifty units and now it's around thirty and probably, I want to say, twenty out of the thirty units we pay.
Thank you.
So, a couple of, a couple of uh, observations I have. First, first, I don't know that any of our trustees, um, other than trustee Quirk and myself have participated in Fourth of July. Because I think everybody else has come on right at the pandemic. Um, and so, or the year before. And so they have not participated from a trustee standpoint. That's number one. Number two, I guess the question is, are there any other municipalities in Milwaukee County that celebrate the Fourth of July on a different date other than the fourth? Number three, I think part of the challenge is, you gotta request and get people on the hook early. If you don't do it until later, then you're, you're, you are competing with other municipalities. But we know the fourth is coming every year and we know when it is. If we're gonna do something, you you have people and have them repeat. I think, um, I think we would be fooling ourselves if we think that people are gonna come to us on a Saturday for Fourth of July celebration and then do others on the fourth. Because some of them are challenged to, to get people to come and do the things that they want them to do. Um, the other piece is, this would be a major shift for the Village of Brown Deer in any municipality. And I, for one, would want to have more community input to make that decision beyond the the committee. Because I think there are people that look and want to have a Fourth of July celebration here on the fourth, like everybody else. And to change it without that com- community, I think um, we would have a whole lot of backlash. There's nothing that has, that I know of has gone after the, to the community to say, how would you feel about changing this from this date to the next? Those are my observations right now. Uh, any other comments? Trustee Quirk?
Uh, we were the first community in the North Shore to have a Fourth of July celebration with fireworks. Um, we always did it on the Fourth of July. That's been our tradition. Um, Thievesville does uh, fun on the Friday or they they do an alternate uh, Fourth of July. Um, also, uh, my, my observation or my comment, my belief on the parade is, I don't think the parade is ever coming back. Um, I think um, interest has declined. I think that cost for units and um, you know, the, how hard it is to engage people and uh, hire people for the parade. Um, we don't have a lot of community uh, community uh, interest. Um, we have no floats. We haven't had floats in a long time, you know, commu- different organizations used to do that. Uh, churches used to do that, Boy Scouts used to do that. We don't have interest from any of those groups to pursue any of those things. I really think that we should focus on paying for the fireworks. Um, also, Fourth of July and fireworks used to be entirely funded from um, additions to the water bill and donations from the community. We used to be able to say, no tax dollars go toward our Fourth of July. Well, that's no longer true. And so I think we really need to focus on the things that get the most bang for our buck, which is fireworks, music in the park, stuff like that. I don't think, I don't see the food tent ever coming back. That was always such a, you know, an economical option for families. Um, but we had a, we had a large group of integrated volunteers and we no longer have them. Um, the parade requires a lot of volunteer time and work organizing it and actually um, being there to, you know, direct people on the day of the parade and in the morning of the parade. Um, we don't have those volunteers anymore. So I think what we should do is focus on the fireworks, focus on paying for the fireworks, have some nice stuff going on in the um, in the park, continue to to do the music. But I think that trying to bring back something that I think has faded from, um, you know, from interest, it's out of our reach expense-wise, I think. Um, I think that the parade is a thing of the past.
But we're focusing tonight on whether or not we want to change the date. That's, that's the recommendation from the committee. So I guess that's the recommendation. They, they want us to change the date from the actual holiday. And then I guess the other challenge is, um, when you start changing it, you know, then folks gotta figure out when it is, you know, oh, we're gonna do it on this day. Is it always gonna be a Saturday? And people may have extended weekends for other stuff. I don't know what people do. But we know that the holiday is the holiday. The fourth is the fourth. If it's in the middle of the week, if it's on Sunday, whenever it is, that's when it is. Um, other comments? And so we need to keep in mind, we're not talking about the parade, we're not talking about the fireworks. Really, it's talking about the date. Do we want to change the date? If I'm, if I'm wrong, please let me know. That's what the pro- the proposal is, to change the date, correct? Okay. Uh, trustee Quirk?
Have we investigated whether other communities are doing anything on that date for the fourth? Do we have competition for that Saturday? Are bands more available on a Saturday than they would be on a, you know, a midweek Fourth of July?
Uh, bands, yes, probably. Also, like, as far as like food vendors and things, um, a lot of struggle that we've had with the food vendors and like having food available um, is a lot of those vendors aren't working on the fourth. So that's another part of, you know, availability-wise um, that we've been seeing. But I don't believe we have any competition. The only thing that we would probably have on that day is the fun before the fourth in Thievesville that you mentioned earlier.
And that's on that Saturday?
It's always the Saturday before um, the fourth.
So we would both be firing off our fireworks on that date?
Uh, yes.
And and we know that there, there are other municipalities in Milwaukee County that do their fire, some do them on, on uh, the eve, the Fourth of July, the night before. And then have their celebration the day out. I think that's what the city does. Typically, the, the night before.
The city does the huge um, like front fireworks and then most, like, there's some, I think, minimal activities at Milwaukee County parks on the day of. Um, but most municipalities within the North Shore are, they either do it on the day of or they don't do it at all.
Yeah. Um, trustee Booker, I saw your hand up, yes.
Yeah, I I can speak from experience that if you book a band uh, early enough, uh, you can just about get any band to play on the Fourth of July. That's a premium performance date. It's just have to, you have to book them soon enough. Uh, I'm inclined to agree that uh, the fourth is when we should have it. It is the Fourth of July. The date always moves around, but that's the day when people are off of work. Um, and I think if you have entertainment, uh, I would be surprised if we couldn't contract with food trucks to uh, provide the food at that Fourth of July event. Uh, I think we keeping it at the fourth is something I would, I would support.
Other comments for many of our other um, trustee Johnson or trustee Woods? Trustee Woods?
Um, my only question is, if we move it this time to the second, what do we do in the future? Because the next couple of years, the Fourth of July is in the middle of the week. Do we start going even earlier at the end of June? Or do we wait till after the fourth and try to do it on the sixth? I mean, are we moving just this one or are we talking about moving it every year in the future so we're not fighting with everybody else?
I think the goal of the committee is to continue, um, you know, keep being consistent of either doing it before or after the fourth. So, like, that's something that I think that the committee was willing to try this year. And obviously, if it doesn't go through or, you know, we see that that does not benefit us or the community, I think we would be, I think the the committee was willing to go back and revert back to the Fourth of July as the day of.
Um, trustee Johnson and then Tyler and then trustee Quirk?
You hear me?
Yes.
Okay. My mic wasn't working the first time. Yeah, I would have to agree to keep it on the fourth. Then we're consistent. I mean, my family come out and we invite people over because we know that later on the day, we're gonna all go watch the fireworks, no matter what day it is on. So I would agree with keeping it on the fourth.
Trustee Quirk?
Um, you know, I'm just thinking of the families in Brown Deer. So, so we, you know, we blow the fireworks off on the Saturday and then the Fourth of July comes and there's nothing. There's just a void. It's like, what's brown? Let's go see Brett. Whoa, well, Brown Deer's already done. So there's nothing. You know, if you don't have family stuff, Fourth of July is just another day. Um, I don't like the idea of breaking with the tradition of actually having our celebration on the fourth.
Uh, Tyler?
Thanks, President Montgomery. Um, I just want to offer one alternative for everyone to consider. Um, you know, anytime we have a committee that brings forward to the recommendation, I I always want to thank them. Um, you know, it's always from a, a good place. Um, and I, and I hear some of the challenges that they're having. Um, I also hear a lot of the, the uh, comments from the board as far as keeping the tradition of the fourth. Um, President Montgomery, I heard your comments earlier about um, re- receiving more community feedback. Well, later on this agenda, we have the community survey. And to give you as a board more data before committing, um, you know, this would kind of defer your decision another year. But you could add this as a community survey question to get more community feedback on if they would be um, open to that idea. And the survey question could include some of the benefits perhaps to doing it. Um, so I just want to give that as an alternative. If we were to do that, we would still be committing to Fourth of July on the Fourth of July for twenty twenty-three. But for twenty twenty-four and onward, you know, this could give you as a board some, some, some direct feedback from people who take that survey to help that decision a little, make it a little easier for you.
Okay. Uh, trustee Thompson?
So um, in what um, Tyler was saying, so then the um, no action would be taken. It would go back to committee or how would it? How would this topic be addressed during this meeting? So that we could come, it would go back to committee and we would be able to talk about, you know, the rationale behind not moving it for twenty twenty-three and collecting the board, collecting the survey um, data to make an informed decision and as to how to move forward with the Fourth of July. So would it go back to committee or would it, would we, would we take the vote and then the vote not pass and then it has a negative connotation going back to the committee?
We don't have, I don't think we have to take a vote. This is consider.
Okay.
Tyler, you had a comment?
So if you want no action, leave it as it is, not even entertain it as an option, no action, we move forward the next agenda item.
Right.
If if you want to defer, have the committee come up with some language for the survey, you could make a motion right now, basically stating, I move for the Special Events Committee to consider a, a community survey question um, to consider moving the Fourth of July date. And then you could pass that as an action as the board and then that would give a month for the Special Event Committee to come up with that question that we can add to the survey.
For twenty twenty-three survey for twenty twenty-four's event?
That is correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
And so one question I have, Danny, has the committee um, looked at any bands or anything yet?
Uh, we were waiting on this decision. Um, I had originally asked to have it on the last meeting, but the agenda filled up a little bit too quickly. So um, we had to push it back to this meeting, so we haven't looked because we were waiting on this decision.
Okay, uh, trustee Quirk?
Danny, do we know if the fireworks uh, company is available on the alternate date?
Uh, Craig said he would work with us with anything. Um, they're pretty flexible. They have multiple crews and it would actually be probably easier for any fireworks vendor. And I did include in the request for consideration um, and explained like if we were to ever lose Craig as our fireworks vendor, moving to a different date off of the fourth would actually benefit us because we wouldn't be in the problem that we had, what, three years ago when we lost Harvey um, and because he retired and uh, then we're like scrambling to find a new fireworks vendor. So I guess in consideration for future, if we um, even if we move to just postpone this for a little bit, waiting on uh, community feedback or um, just more uh, investigation of about, you know, figuring things out. Um, I think it is something to consider, you know, possibly moving forward with a different date if we run into that situation again, which we could revisit at a different time.
All right, so where we are right now is, um, this is discussion considering, and if we're not gonna um, move on changing the date, it can just be a discussion. And I think in, in terms of, Danny, you've heard what the, the board has said. You know, it could be an agenda item back uh, for special events just to um, continue discussion around what possibly add that to the community survey. And gives, gives more time to for people. To be perfectly honest, I already have invitations right now for the Fourth of July, for out of town. So there are people that are planning, because they know it's, it's, I mean, I'm not going, but there are people that are already planning. They have their things already set. They started from the Fourth of July from the previous year for next year. So um, uh, with that, unless somebody has something else they want to speak to on this item, we can move to the next. Trustee Quirk?
I think we need to give a, a concrete decision on the date because, as you remarked, everyone is making plans for the Fourth of July. Delaying this for a month or two weeks or whatever it would be um, is not a good idea. I think we should, we should, we should give a concrete opinion and not leave it uh, flexible.
But we don't, we don't need to. It's not changing. This was a recommendation. This was a recommendation. And if I'm, if I understood, we don't need to make a motion because we're not changing the date. The Fourth of July is the Fourth of July. Am I correct, Attorney Byer?
That is correct. If, if it'll just stay, it'll stay on the fourth unless you move to change it. And then I think if I understood correctly, I know it's a little more difficult to lose some, some, some in translation on the Zoom. But I, what I understood the discussion to be was to take a closer look at it for next year.
Right.
Possibly even put it on the survey.
Right, correct. Right.
Yeah, just a point of clarification for staff. Is any board member opposed to having the special events committee create a survey question to inquire about the date?
No, I think we'd want to see it, but.
Well, yeah. So seeing none, you know, Danny, I think that's feedback for you to take to the next special events committee for them to formulate a survey question. And then you as a board will see that question in February. So, uh, but at least that gives the special events committee a direct decision on 2023's date.
Correct. Um, so the next item on, thank you.
President Montgomery.
Oh, trustee Thompson.
Yes. Um, so would this, would, would this not include the time change? Cause it was a date change and the time change. So this all inclusive, because what we were looking at was, you know, condensing it, making it closer towards the evening, mid-afternoon, evening timeframe. That was one of the recommendations. So is it all inclusive? It's the date and the time, or when we, once, if we're staying on the date, the time is not relevant, for lack of a better word.
I think we post our activities for that day anyway. So we would be celebrating, um, and this past year, we didn't have a parade. So I don't think we started anything till later in the day and we got rained out.
We started at noon in the park.
Right, right. So I think we, whatever time we do, we promote that. It doesn't have to be, yeah, we started at noon and by two, we were all rained out. And so everybody had to leave. So I don't, I don't think that's something, um, that we need to, to change. I think as you get your plans together and we promote whatever it is. But it would be on the Fourth of July. So, um, I don't see any other hands. If not, we will move to the next agenda item, which is, uh, consider approval to exceed budgeted funds to replace truck number seventy-three. And I know Matthew is on pins and needles because the Bucks game start, uh, what time does it start? Seven. Matthew, are you still there? He's already in the game. No, I'm just kidding. He may be.
Uh, it looks like he's still here on the Zoom call, but.
Yeah, I know. I, I see him there. I'm just saying, I don't know if he.
Yeah, I had trouble unmuting. I'm on my phone. So, um, yeah, no, I am still here. Um, this agenda item though, so we had our truck number seventy-three. The order was canceled by Ford. Um, this is an industry-wide problem that we've been running into. So there was two hundred orders placed in the state and we were one of twelve that were canceled. Um, we did place our order extremely early. It would have been in October of twenty twenty-one. Um, and we just found out now that it is canceled. Um, as you recall, for truck seventy-eight, we actually, um, asked for approval for a build spot, build spot in February of twenty twenty-one. And then, um, made place the order this year. And so we're, we're about it, we're seeing about a year out on, on truck orders. Um, I do have our mechanic on the line as well, Matt Strine, if there's any specific questions related to the order. But I know Matt's really been pulling his hair out on trying to get these trucks ordered timely. Um, and so with it being canceled, there is an increase. Um, we did do a cursory look at other vehicles that would fit the body that we have sitting at Casper's right now. Um, they were significantly higher in price because Ewald has the state bid. Um, so we're looking at a twelve thousand dollar increase. We do have fund balance for this increase in the equipment fund. And so it'd be covered through the fund balance.
Okay. Um, any questions, um, from any of our trustees? Uh, trustee Owens.
Okay. So would we be still going through the, uh, state bid or through Ewald to get this particular vehicle or?
That's correct. Yes, that's correct. So the reason for that twelve thousand dollar increase, and there's the quote in there from Ewald, is because we're up to a twenty twenty-three body or chassis now versus the twenty twenty-two. Yep. And so there was a price increase because of the twenty twenty-three model versus the twenty twenty-two.
Okay. Now are we sure that we'll be able to get this? We won't be, uh, kicked off the list like we were?
So we haven't, the reason this is coming before you tonight and instead of the finance is because we found out the order was canceled. And we have until Ju- January thirteenth to return signed paperwork. And with that, we will be guaranteed a build spot this year.
Okay.
Other questions? If not, um, we need, uh, a motion to approve the exceeded budgeted amount to replace truck number seventy-three.
This is trustee Thompson. Um, I moved to exceed the budgeted funds to replace truck number seventy-three.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Everybody's seconding.
That's the challenge with virtual. Well, uh, trustee Thompson, uh, moved approval to exceed the budgeted amount for truck number seventy-three. Trustee Owens, second. Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Any opposed? Eyes have it motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Um, so Matthew, I, I think you have any other agenda items?
No, that is it.
Go Bucks.
All right, go Bucks. Thank you. Good night.
All right. Um, see, that's virtual. He can do that. If we were in person, would be hard to do. Um, the next item on our agenda is consider plans for the Brown Deer Farmers Market. Tyler, are you gonna be presenting on that? Okay.
Yep, I'll take this one. Thank you, President. Um, so a year ago, we, we decided to keep the farmers market at the marketplace. Um, we wanted, I think, talking with some of the board members at that meeting, we wanted to make sure once the farmers market concluded for twenty twenty-two, that we completed a survey to get some data, give them some feedback on community residents and partners on the farmers market. Uh, the data showed for residents, it was an overwhelming, almost a three to one in favor of moving the location to a more vibrant location. Um, and the location that got the most votes, uh, by a good amount was by the pond, uh, where we could partner with FIS with some additional parking and almost have it as like a block party um, on a weekly basis there. Uh, the other thing that we reviewed was the time of the event. Several of the vendors, uh, wanted the time to be reduced. Um, and also the people that work the farmers market too, wanted to be reduced. Um, hardly anyone has an eight-hour farmers market. So five hours wa- is much more common. Um, the farmers market committee is recommending a ten to three option. Um, and I, I talked with them about maybe once in a while, you know, you have special hours that may extend to five once in a while. Uh, but ten to three would be the consistent timeframe. So we did not get a lot of vendor responses, even though we actually went, um, onsite to provide the, the survey to them. Um, there's some language barriers there that we'll be working on to try to, um, get a Mung interpreter in the future to continue getting, uh, some feedback there on that. Um, but we want to get a decision made well in advance. If you as a board approve this tonight, so that we can communicate this change to the public, um, as well as the vendors. And our marketing communications coordinator is ready to go to start utilize, if, if you approve the location and the time change, to start gathering some, um, uh, potential new vendors based on this location. Um, I think the last thing about this location, not only could there be a really nice partnership between the pond and the farmers market, but you have a lot of businesses that I think the employees would have some interest visiting the place for lunch, uh, which you don't necessarily have that with the location and empty parking lot in the marketplace. So, um, so, uh, this was the, the recommendation brought forward by the farmers market committee, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? What, what are the hours of the pond? I think those Danny's still on, you had Danny's on. What's the hours of the pond?
We are open from eleven to five, but at some point, um, the Park and Rec Committee and I will be making a request to consideration to change those hours, just to accommodate some of those working families past that five o'clock close time.
But still open at eleven?
Uh, no, we would probably open a little bit later.
Hmm.
Just because the staffing part of it, we wouldn't be able to, unless we had a bigger staff. But right now there's a lifeguard shortage nationwide. So we barely have staff as it is with that. So we would have to accommodate the new timeframe with the amount of staff that we have available.
Okay. Um, any questions? Trustee Booker.
So the, we would be moving to a Saturday, uh, date. This would be on Saturdays.
Oh, good clarification. It would remain on Wednesday. Uh, the issue with the Saturday is a lot of the vendors that we use, um, are at other markets on a Saturday. So we would lose a lot of the vendors. There's a lot of interest for Saturday, but that was the issue with the vendors. Um, we asked the question, if it wasn't on Saturday, what was the next best day? And Wednesday was one of the top answers. So that was another reason why the committee decided to keep it on Wednesday as a recommendation.
Other questions? Do we, yeah, um, and it may be easier access to coming in and out from the village in terms of, um, more central.
And honestly, I don't know how long Namdar, the property owner, will allow us to be there. So I would hate, you know, for us to get into March and April and all of a sudden they say no to us. So I also want to be proactive in that, you know, in that sense, or if for some, you know, if, if they were to sell it, which.
Right. It could be under development.
Yeah, who knows? So I'm just trying to be a little proactive in that.
Any other questions? Again, I want to thank the staff for your due diligence and looking for location time, you know, going through all the process, um, to keep this amenity in the village and, uh, to bring forth these recommendations. If there are no questions, we do have, uh, recommendation for motion, um, in our packet. And there are four different. Uh. Okay.
Yeah.
So we don't have to go through all of them.
Yeah.
Is there someone that would like to make that motion to accept the recommendations? Trustee Owens.
Okay. I moved that we make the following changes to the farmers market for twenty twenty-three.
You can make it simpler, trustee Owens. Just say you moved to accept the recommendation.
Okay, I moved to accept the recommendation for the farmers market.
Is there a second? It's been moved by trustee Owens and second by trustee Quirk to accept the recommendations, uh, presented, uh, related to the farmers market. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? As have it motion carries. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is, um, discuss the twenty twenty-three community survey. And that is in our packet. Tyler, I'm assuming you will.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll tee up. We don't have to discuss much tonight. Uh, probably on February twentieth, we will spend more time. The reason I'm bringing it tonight though, is because we're gonna do quite a bit of outreach the next few weeks on getting, uh, input and feedback from residents, businesses, community groups, if they want to add questions to the survey. And I just want you as a board to be informed before we go out and, and, and do that inquiry. So as I mentioned, one of the goals that I had when I started was to bring forward a community survey. This is a, a, a good practice of municipalities to do. You don't have to do it every year, but every two or three years is a, is, I think, um, a, a good goal for a municipality, um, especially one of our size. Um, the survey would be divided into three parts. The first part would be benchmarking. These would be constant questions that we would have uh, year, you know, every survey, so we can kind of see the trend and the progress of, of the, the feedback in those areas. The second are kind of what I would call mini referendum questions in the sense of they would be one-time questions where you, as a board, want to get more specific feedback on a topic. Fourth of July would be the example there, right? That we would add as a one-time question. The third would be demographics, so that we could analyze the data and, and see if there's trends based on age, race and, uh, ethnicity, uh, based on location, living in the village, um, uh, rent versus property ownership. So there's different trends that we would be able to identify there too. So, um, working with staff, I think we're about seventy-five, eighty percent of the way there on questions. Um, you know, those are some typical questions that we would like to see. Um, if you have any general questions or discussions on the current questions, you know, happy to assist. Um, but, you know, right now, my goal is A, for you as a board to be informed. Um, and then B, um, when we come back February twentieth, that's when I'll be asking for you as a board to vote on the questions themselves, so that we can finalize the survey before it goes out. We would anticipate the survey to be out in March and April. That way we can fully utilize all of our communication tools like, um, the, the magazine, utility bills, the election, uh, and, and at the voting station or the voting pulling wards, um, and obviously all the communications that we have now to get the word out. Um, and then this would also allow us to be on a timeline that we would get the results by June, probably the latest. And then that way we would do a presentation with the board, so you can utilize that to develop some further strategic planning and other initiatives. You can utilize that for our budget development efforts, um, with the capital improvement plan. Um, and so the timing works out really well to do it here in, in kind of the, the early spring. That being said, I'll, I'll be happy to take any questions.
Trustee Owens.
I had a question on the, uh, specific use questions, uh, specifically the, um, the leaf collection. Now, you mentioned the service would require homeowners to place all leaves in a, in a bag. Are you just talking about just one particular bag or something that would provide, be provided to us or?
Yeah, so that's a question I'm still having, uh, Matthew amend. Um, he hasn't fully worked it out yet. So right now it's as a placeholder. So, um, what I would ask is, you know, just know that we are developing some kind of leaf question. Um, our, at our February twentieth Village Board Agenda Meeting, you will see that, the exact wording of that. And, and Matthew will be on that call to make sure to respond to those questions. But there's a few ways that that leaf service may look like depending on costs. And that's the part that we'll have to, um, zero in on before February twentieth.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
Is there a deadline, Tyler? If, if any of the trustees have, uh, question or something that they want to get to you to be included?
Yes, good question. Uh, I would recommend February sixth, that if you have a particular question you would like to add, February sixth would be the date. We would want that by, that will give us a week to finalize the list of survey questions before it goes out. Thank you for that.
Other questions? And there may be things that maybe you're not thinking of right now, but going back and just thinking of things that people have asked you. And there may be things that maybe you're not thinking of right now, but going back and just thinking of things that people have asked you. Why doesn't the village do this? Or? Why can't we do that? It may be something that you may not think of right now, but now you do have a date. In which you can get, um. That information back to Tyler. But I think this, this certainly helps. Uh, it's another opportunity for people to be engaged in what goes on in the community. So, um, when it comes out, I would hopefully, um, people would share it and, and. Everybody's not on. It's going out on different platforms, sort of being the magazine and. Different places. So hopefully we can, uh, get everybody. Or at least the majority of the people in the village to participate. Other questions or comments? Well, you have until February sixth to get any, uh, questions in, but if you have. Um, you go back and look at this again. If you have suggestions, make sure to get them to Tyler. Um, sooner than later. And this was, this was just a discussion item, so it's not anything we have to vote on. So if there are no other questions, um, we can move on to item. E, which is discuss property tax billing error and consider assessment services request for proposals. Um, Tyler?
So I'll be starting this and then anything that I miss, Derek will be helping me with. Um, so I'm going to keep it short because I think all of you, uh, know the issue, but if anyone's reading, reading the recording, I want to make sure they're aware. Um, we came across a, a property tax billing error. Where when, when property tax bills went out, the valuations that were recorded for all manufacturing properties was listed at zero. Um, if you do the equation, our levy is what was set at, but if we have a smaller valuation, that means everyone that. Had their valuations correct, paid a little bit more because of that. Um, so as a result, we need to reissue property tax bills out to the entire. Um, community, which is going to require a lot of staff time and all hands on deck to, to help Derek. Um, and, and us get this done. Um, so that's the unfortunate news. The, the good news is this will be, you know, good news for everyone else, meaning. If you've already paid, you'll be getting a reimbursement of the overcharge. If you haven't paid yet, you'll be receiving, um, a, 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 a smaller bill. Um, our plan to communicate this, um, I, I've typed up a letter. We're going to be sending out that letter with the property tax bills once they're, um. Issued, uh, by the end of this week, we'll, we'll hopefully get that out. So people would receive them early next week. Uh, the letter that I drafted will be in all of our communications this Thursday and Friday. Um, so it'll be out even before the bills are, are received in the mail. Um, and then, um, slowly, um, you know, because there's only so many checks that we can probably do in a day unless we can find a way through BSNA to do it. Um, there will be so many checks that we'll be able to get out per day. So. If you talk with anyone, they'll need to be patient to get that reimbursement of the overcharge as we try to. You know, there's prob, I'm estimating somewhere near two thousand or so checks that we're going to have to get out. So there's a lot of checks that we'll have to, to process. I don't want to spend too much time looking back, but I think it is important to do, just reflect and make sure that. You know, you make sure a mistake like this isn't done again. Um, and you know, anytime, you know, as a village and I think as a leader, you have to identify responsibility. As much, as much or as little as that responsibility is, you have to do that. Um, and, and there's some things that we already talked about internally that we'll be doing differently. For starters, there's no documentation as far as how it's been done in the past. Uh, the fact that we're with LandNav, the process is different too. Um, so you know, Derek and I have talked about making sure that we document the process. So that for future years, if we have transition and someone comes new into the treasurer role, um, it's no, it's how it's done. Uh, another learning moment is going to have to be with the assessor and, and, and I've had conversations with our other assessor. For, for whatever reason, the assessor has told me that they don't have access to. The, the manufacturing report that comes out from the D O, oh, uh, the D O R, because they're the ones that assess manufacturing properties. Um, after talking with, uh, a few agencies who both contract out for assessment services or have an assessor on staff. All of them have said that should be the assessor's responsibility to. Update the role based on that report, that that report is public. You don't need a password or a username. That's all available on their website. Um, so it's unfortunate to hear that message from the other municipalities. It's something that we'll be continuing to talk with the assessor on. Um, you know, frankly, I'm still surprised with the services that Brown Deer has been receiving because I can tell you when I was in Shorewood for seven years. We weren't having any issues with accurate. So I, 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 I remain shocked to. Um, to see the, the, in the, the, the poor service that we've been receiving. Um. To, a theme for twenty twenty-three is going to be RFPs. So this is really the nature of the discussion I want to get at tonight. Um, there's a few services that, you know, as staff now has been in the role for a year and they're, and they're associated roles, that there's a few services that. Um, we, we do want to review, um, that we feel like could be better done, um, even if it's the same. People who do it, we feel an RFP process could really identify some, some, uh, of the, um, misperformance that we have been seeing. Um, the assessor one was one I was having a hard time with, and I actually called the assessor personally in Wawa Tosa to get a neutral perspective. And inquiring with them, I said, if we were go to RFP now for assessor services. How would you feel about that? And they mentioned this would be the absolute worst time to go out to an RFP for assessment services. There's two reasons. One, this is their busiest time of year. So they predicted that nobody would submit a, a request or you would not receive, uh, requests from everyone that you would want. The second reason is there's a state report that's due February third. Um. Where you have to file all the sales in your community. And if, if we went out to RFP right now, we did as soon as we would be able to finalize a, a service agreement would be February twentieth. So that report would be late. Um, and they would also be missing out several months to start reviewing building permit applications. So the assessor from Wawa Tosa mentioned that we would be at a high risk of delaying. Um, property tax bills being sent out on time for twenty twenty-three. And she said, if you already had an air with property tax bills going out this year. You know, she would suggest you do everything in your power to make sure you don't delay tax bills going out. Wrong again. So. You know, her recommendation, talking with her, and of course, accurate also recommended this as I talked with them, but I feel like they have, uh, uh, us, you know. Obviously a slanted opinion with that as a business relationship, but. Both have recommended that if you want to go out to RFP as a community, the summer is a much, much better time to do it. Right after the board of review is done. So having said that, you know, I just wanted to do my best to provide you the facts. As a, as a, as a board, uh, to determine if you want to go out to RFP now. Uh, versus waiting to the summer when it's being recommended, we do it. In case you wanted to do it now, I, I did have the RFP ready for, uh, your review. Um, but having a neutral party give that recommendation. You know, I, I feel like it was, you know, a, a conversation we needed to have here at the board level before. You know, we, we determine when we would want to execute that RFP. So having said that, you know, I don't know, Derek, if you have anything else you would like to say, but those were the main comments I wanted to. Present tonight.
No, I think you covered most of it. I mean, a lot of this boils down to also like, I just, I just didn't know what to look for. Like there was pretty good instructions put in place by LandNav. And I thought the process went pretty well. That was one of the first steps, you know, you get your assessment roll, you import it. And then you make sure they match. And I just, I did not know that they didn't include manufacturing.
And we all know that we are, I don't know how many municipalities, Derek, do, do you know how many municipalities actually did the? Transition to land man this year?
There's eighteen total and, uh, eighteen total municipalities, Milwaukee County, six to the transition.
Okay, so we were one of the first to do the transition, which we knew it would. Be a challenge, but we certainly didn't think it would be a challenge on the assessors.
Right. So someone like a bigger one like Walatosa, they're, I mean, they're big enough where they have a full assessor, that internal staff. And other North Shore communities. I mean, besides for Glendale, several probably don't even have manufacturing.
Right.
Yeah.
So that was, that's also part of the air and kind of the. You know, the communication and, and not ident, you know, ha- ha- probably half of the communities, Milwaukee County don't have manufacturing. So. This wouldn't be a detailed instruction, you know, that, that's necessarily given out. Um, so that's, that's one of the core reasons. Why, why we need to make sure internally we have good documentation on processes. You know, I hope Derek is here for several, several years, but you know, if he were to leave and we have a new treasurer. A, I hope we would have a, an assessor who is proactive in that communication. But second of all, we, we need to have those processes written out so that, you know, a new treasurer can be set up for. You know, success and happen. So those are some things that we're going to make sure that we do on our ends. This doesn't happen in the future.
And I think we, unfortunately, this is the second year in a row that we've had challenges with accurate.
Yeah, I mean, accurate, the other issue with accurate has been communication. Now. I, I do have confidence that they're going to address a lot of the communication errors that people saw last year during open book and that. They have completely given us a new project manager due to our request. Um, and I have noticed that communication has been much better since that has happened. Um, so I, and, and, and they've been professional, at least when I've communicated with them. So that part I feel good about. But you know, when you see mistakes like this, or especially with the marketplace. That happened last year, you know, in, it makes me uncomfortable. Um, but yeah, I, I really want to hear as a board. Um. You know, as much as I know you probably want, you know, want to at least consider an RP to move on, you know, hearing what we've heard from some neutral parties. Um, would you be content going one more? Um, process? And then have, I mean, we already have the RP ready, so we, we can issue that directly after board of review. I mean, that, so that's the feedback we're, we're looking for as staff tonight.
Uh, trustee Owens?
Yeah, a couple of things on this. Uh, I had a question in regards to the, um, the dollar value of the. Uh, manufacturing properties that we're talking about. You know, wha- what is that? I mean, how much is it?
I mean, I know bad, Derek is, I'll, I'll give, I'll just give one example and then you can give more. Uh, Badger Meters one, I think that's one of the largest manufacturing.
I have it in front of me.
Oh, do you? Okay, go ahead.
So it's actually, it's, uh, there's, there's ten manufacturing for real estate and then there's twelve for personal property. The real estate is around twenty-three million. And the personal property is, uh, between four and five.
Four or five million?
Okay, so and then our total assessed value is about one point two billion, a little under that. But I mean, it's a, it's a decent chunk, like it's.
Okay. No, I was just curious because, um, on that. Um, then the other thing too, I had a chance to look at the, the RFP that you, um, are proposing and. Um. It's really not ready to go out at this point in that. I think it, it lacks a few. Areas and, and, and one of the areas I was thinking about or that I saw. That it seemed to be a little bit lax in was in terms of. Um. What happens, uh? You know, if, if you need to. An out clause basically, in that there wasn't really much of an out clause. In it in case something happens. And the reason why I'm saying that is that. And I'll probably, you're probably hearing me say this a lot when I work for county and things like that. When we would do RFPs, they would normally be for like three years. With the option, we do maybe in a couple of years or something like that. And what, what I found that that did was. It gave us the opportunity. So if things weren't really going right, you had the opportunity to change and then plus it put a little pressure on the vendor. To provide us with a good service and that if they weren't providing us with a good service, then. They knew that they weren't going to be selected again. And then also too, the way our budget was set up, we couldn't. Promise them that we were going to pay them, you know, past the three years, even though we always did, but. According to the ordinance, we really couldn't. Um, so I was just going to say, and then too, it seems like you reached out to, to, to Tulsa and a couple of other places in that. And they said basically this wasn't really a good time to do it. Okay, that, that's fine, but I just think that if we were to try to push this out now, we really aren't ready for it. The RP need. Needs to have some tweaking and stuff done to it. So I would agree that, yeah. Did, just wait on it until we get the opportunity to be able to put out. A good RFP that protects the village. Because a lot of times what you'll find in contracts and that contracts are usually written to the benefit of the person that's writing the contract, especially like companies and that. So, and in this case, I, I, I think we're lacking in a few areas on our, on our proposal. So I'd hate to put it out there and then find out that. It really doesn't serve the benefit of the, um, village of Brown Deer.
One, one of the things Tyler said too was that if we went over now, I don't even know if anyone would bid because.
That's what I'm saying.
These guys are doing their work right now.
Mm-hmm.
And they, you know, their schedules are probably booked.
Right, right, I understand.
Uh, Tyler?
Yeah, so to the trustee Owens point, I, I think that's a great point. Um, it is in our, um. Uh, we have like a service agreement template that is, that is some standard language that's in there. Um, you know, we kind of have developed, uh, an RFP template that a lot of RFPs will utilize, but. I think when we get to some of the contractual standard language in there. That's where we need to compare that section to our service agreement template. And get them to better match. So, um, you know, if the board is content with deferring this for a few months until after board of review. I'll be happy to do that exercise. And then as a double check, I will use attorney bear to look through that. Uh, to, to confirm that not only it matches, but that that language is, is strong. Because I would agree with trustee Owens, that is language that whatever we have in our finalized service agreement. We have to have some kind of out clauses.
Um, an observation, Tyler or Derek, um, on this request for proposal. Make sure we have our twenty twenty-three dates in here. We have, uh, twenty twenty-two for January twentieth and twenty-seven.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm still adjusting to the new year. Good catch. Yep. I see that. Yeah, we'll make sure to do that. And obviously if you, as a board are okay with deferring, I mean, we would change the dates altogether, obviously.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Um, so this is, uh. The discussion, do we, can we just do a consensus that we're okay with moving the data? Do we need a motion? We could do a consensus.
I'm okay with the consensus. Yeah, I would be fine with the consensus unless anyone opposes.
Um, is there any further discussion? Or questions? If not, do we have a consensus to have staff, um, adjust those dates to, um, meet? Um, more favorable in terms of us, um, going out for an RFP? Everybody's okay?
Yes.
Anything? Okay, anybody opposed to that? All right. So I think staff, you have your direction.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. And, um, Derek, we know you being baptized by fire this first year. You're learning a lot. So. Keep.
I'm going to always recognize Derek publicly. The amount that is on his plate right now. Is extraordinary and, and, and I, I, you know, please be patient with him. Not only is he trying to do through this, but we're wrapping up the audit, which we feel confident will have ready. Uh, for a presentation for your next meeting. Um, and on top of that, he is now working on trying to get reconciliation done for twenty twenty-two, so that audit's done on time. I mean, there's just a lot on his plate. So, you know, I'm going to do everything in my power to recognize him because he is putting in a ton of hours to, to help the village out. So very appreciative.
Thank you. Um. The next item on our agenda is, um. To recess into closed session. For the following reason, to confer with legal counsel for the governmental body. Who is rendering oral or written advice concerning. who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to become involved in regard to a possible nuisance or other si- other civil action to address a property may pose a threat to health or human safety. Do we have a motion to move into closed session?
Uh, trustee Thompson, I'm moved that we move into closed session.
Is, is there a second? By Derek?
Oh, second.
Um, it's been moved by trustee Thompson and second by trustee Woods to go into closed session, uh, pursuant to the, um, information here on our agenda. And, uh, we would stop the recording.